Welcome, everyone, to the August 13th Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Just like to announce that Supervisor Bowman and Supervisor Parrotano won't be here tonight. The Board of Supervisors held an executive session at 6:00 where we discussed personnel and legal matters. Board of Supervisors also held a workshop at 6:30 where we were honored to have our local fire departments come out tonight to speak to us about the upcoming RDA requests that they have. Mr. Mulholland gave us an update on some storm damage at Russell Elliott Park. Mr. Mulholland, sir, you have more details than I do. Would you mind going over that for residents listening at home?
Sure. So, we had some storm damage on some poles at Russell Elliott Park, the softball field numbered one, with a storm a few weeks ago. We've been in communication with our insurance company. They're coming out Monday to do the adjustment so we can see what we're looking at, and then we can make a plan going forward from there. It also possibly damaged the foul ball netting in one of the dugouts. We also have a light out at Russell Elliott. We're working on now to kind of get that settled. And then, once we have an answer from the insurance adjustment, we can go forward to plan from there.
Okay. And I know we had some representatives tonight from LSAA came to our workshop. We spoke to them. We had some, you know, good conversation, so hopefully...
So, we'll try to work together. And I spoke with the president for LSAA and see if we can have baseball and softball work together to try to figure out field scheduling and make sure the girls can all play.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mulholland, for that update.
Yep.
Mr. Mulholland spoke about the Play Wiki outdoor bathroom being reopened again. He also spoke about some sanitary systems being connected in certain areas of our township. Mr. Coppin spoke about some planning work to be done at the Play Wiki farm, and we also just had a general overview of the agenda items for tonight. Now, at this time, I would like to open the floor to public comment. If you'd like to come up, please state your name, your address, if you could put everything in the logbook, and there's always a three-minute time limit.
Hi, yeah. My name is Glenn Stevens. I reside at 3405 East Merrill Avenue in Feasterville, PA. Is that that location that on October 16, 2023, my neighbor started destroying my property? I asked him to stop. He ignored me, so I called the police. When the police came, my neighbor turned and said, "Call Mike Italia." If anybody doesn't know, that's the guy next to the chief of police. That's Mike Italia?
Mr. Stevens, if you can address the board, please?
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Um, so, that was crazy to me, but believe it or not, the police did not serve and protect me. He talked to Mike Italia on the phone, and he left. Just for everybody's faith, whenever you're dealing with the police, always break out your phone and record everything, because I wanted to get a copy of this from the police, because the gentleman was wearing a body cam, but the police have destroyed the evidence. I don't know why, but it's gone. Um, so, what the next thing I did was, I came here, and I wanted to ask Mike Italia why he would do these things to me. But Mike Italia, on, I'm guessing, on advice from his counselor, Mr. Dillon, pled the fifth. He refused to answer any questions. After doing something so bizarre at supposedly the township's behest, he refused to answer questions. So, next, I tried to ask questions again, and you, sir, told me, like you did here, only address the counsel. Now, I looked through a lot of YouTube. You've never said that to anyone else before. You've always let whoever had questions for Mike Italia to ask those questions, and believe it or not, Mike Italia answered them. Now, I said this quote before. I guess from John Burke. "The only way for evil to succeed and prosper is for good men to do nothing." I don't know why you won't look at this, at the video evidence before it was destroyed, talk to the police officer, and ask him why he didn't serve and protect. Ask, um, take, get his, um, his, uh, they don't destroy police reports ever, so you can look at the police report and find out exactly why Mike Italia did what he did and what he told that police officer, but you've done nothing. Can you tell me why? But was that under Mr. Dillon's instruction? Or did you decide all on your own that the truth didn't matter to you? That's just, you're limited to the question. Why have you not sought the truth, sir?
Mister, have you ever diagnosed with amnesia? Because we have given you plenty of...
I would like to, if I have amnesia, please correct me, and I won't ever ask you this again. Why did you not seek the truth, sir?
We've been down this road, mister.
Why did you not seek the truth, sir? I, I, I can show you a video. I don't have it with me today. I can show it to video. I can show it to everyone to show that I'm speaking the truth, that I just told you three other ways after the destruction.
Mr. Stevens, it's that magical time, sir. Thank you very much. You're three minutes in.
Thank you very much for paying attention. Mr. Dillon doesn't. He looks down the whole time, and please, seek the truth for your taxpayers. Seek the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. We appreciate that. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? You just state your name, your address. If you could log it in our book, we'd appreciate it.
My name's Kayla Taylor. I live at 1636 Bridgetown Pike. I have concerns about the stormwater runoff.
Excuse me. Can you speak into my...
I have concerns about the stormwater runoff. I have been in contact before with Rich Coppins about our property, and he has told me that the township will not put any money into our property. We have been required by the township to put a berm on our property to help the water stop incoming all the way. We have a 2,000-square-foot driveway, and it leads all the way up to our door. The berm now gets flooded over since the repave of Herschel and Bridgetown, and we are getting swallowed up by the amount of water that is just flooding into our property. So, I'm looking for a solution, a drainage issue. We moved in in 2022, and this has been ongoing since. Our berm has been dug up by the township when they replaced Herschel again, so it's been replaced now five times since we put it in. So, now, it's just really discouraging that after all this time, all the money spent, all the money that we had to spend on permits, we're still getting flooded. And now, the berm's not being able to be seen over the water, so I don't know how that doesn't impact the drivers in our area to not being able to see.
Uh, I apologize. Your last name again was?
Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R.
Mrs. Taylor, I apologize for having any issues. This is the first time I've been hearing about it.
I brought pictures, too, if you'd like to see.
Um, sure. I tell you what, not that we are going to diagnose everything right now. Do you have pictures that you can just leave with us?
Yeah.
Okay. That would be terrific.
I went over to Joe Hogan's office this morning looking to see...
Sure. I'll, we'll make sure we pass him out to the board.
Um, all of this has been sent through to the township, stormwater management complaints, all of it's through the email and copied to Rich Coppins, too, but I just feel like we're at such a sand sale on not only the flooding in our property, but how much worse it's gotten since the repave.
Okay. I can't make any promises now, other than, you know, we will speak to Mr. Coppins. He can give us an update on anything. Mr. Coppins, do you have anything?
The last four emails, he hasn't answered me or my boyfriend.
All right. Well, we, as I said, this is the first time I've heard about it. I don't believe my colleagues have heard anything about it.
So, it's been going on since we, we moved in in January of 2022. We reached out in April. We put the berm in in 2023. It's been the last, in September, they dug up Herschel. It's been removed for eight months, put back on and removed, and now, the past couple storms have been severe flooding, but when is severe flooding impacting your drivers? And also, my safety and their safety.
Was the, you had a permit to put the berm in?
Yeah, one that, it was requi, it was required by the township. We still had to pay for the permit. They said that there was findings from the engineers, but they wouldn't give me any of the information from the engineers.
Looking at it.
Thank you.
Could you, would you mind just leaving me your contact information?
Sure. Right on here.
Okay. I will, I'll call you back myself.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you very much. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? If you can state your name, your address, and if you could log it in the book, we'd appreciate it.
Yep. Good evening. I'm Erica De Palma. I live at 25 Herschel Street. I first moved to Feasterville about 20 years ago. I raised all of my children here, and I have amazing memories here. Most important memories I have are at Play Wiki, and I do understand that they are looking for another board member, and that's something that I would like to be considered for. I would love to be able to offer my services and whatever it is I can bring to that foundation in order for it to continue to thrive and bring memories for all the other residents.
Thank you very much for introducing yourself to us. We appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? All right, seeing none. Now, we will move on to the consent agenda. Line one, A, approval of minutes, July 29, or, excuse me, July 9, 2025. B, approval of accounts payable, August 13, 2025. C, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, August 13, 2025. D, ratifications of accounts payable, July 29, 2025. E, ratification of certain recurring monthly bills, July 29, 2025. And F, approval of township Costco membership and credit card with a limit of $5,000. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second? Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item two, approval of the 2025 haunted hayride agreement. Mr. Dillon, sir?
Yes, I received a letter from Mr. Fenningham on behalf of the hayride event at the Phoenix Club. The proposal is to run the hayride again this year, subject to the same terms as we had last year. So, a motion, I've talked to Mr. Mulholland and Mr. Gallo. They're comfortable with that, so the motion would...
All right. The motion would read then to approve the 2025 haunted hayride agreement. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item three, consider...
Thank you very much, and just wanted to give the assurances to the manager and the park director. Do the same things I do every week with the annual food check, so we're also...
Great. And we want to thank you for being, well, thank you for being a valuable business in our township. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
You guys, people, people love what you guys do. All right. All righty. Uh, line item three, consider award of bids for vehicles sold on municipal bid. Mr. Coppin, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. This is a municipal bid reward recommendation for the 2025 municipal bid. Recommend you award the following four township vehicles that were for sale on municipal bid to the highest bidders as follows. The 1987 GMC Step Van, real estate starting bid price was $1,500. High bid, $3,600. The 2008 Ford Van, original, the real estate starting bid price was $1,500. The high bid was $2,600. The 2010 GMC Sierra 1500, real estate starting bid price at $1,500. High bid was $3,602. The 2012 Ford Expedition, real estate starting bid price was $1,500. The high bid price was $3,200.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Coppin. So, the motion would read to approve the sale of the highest bidder of vehicles listed in Mr. Coppin's memo dated August 6, 2025. I will make the motion for that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item four, consider award of the 2025 road improvement program and roadway maintenance program. Mr. Everett, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. As you guys are aware, we did something a little different this year with the road program. We split it up in two different portions. Typically, the township does a mill and overlay with pavement. This year, we have 12 roads that we're going to mill and overlay and six roads that we're going to use a type-two slurry to treat. The roads, some of the roads last year were treated with this type-two slurry, and the township seemed to indicate that it's something that may be for maintenance purposes in the future that we're, we're going to try out. So, we're going to separate this into two separate motions. So, the first is recommend that the 2025 roadway improvement program be awarded to James D. Morrissey in an amount of $613,264.60. And then, we recommend award of the roadway maintenance program to the only bidder that we had received, which was Asphalt Maintenance Solutions, which was $156,985.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Everett. So, as Mr. Everett had said, this is a two-part motion. Motion one would be to award the 2025 roadway improvement program for pavement repairs, milling, and overlay to James D. Morrissey, Inc., the lowest bidder, for the amount of $613,264.60, and to authorize the township manager to sign the contracts. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? First, motion one passes. Now, we move on to motion two, to award the 2025 roadway maintenance program for asphalt seal coat, slurry seal, crack sealing, and pavement markings to Asphalt Maintenance Solution LLC, the lowest bidder, for the amount of $156,985, and to authorize the township manager to sign the contracts. Do we have a motion?
Sound moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to line item five, consider authorizing the advertisement for the Roberts Avenue Storm Sewer Project. Mr. Everett, once again, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. Looking for an authorization to advertise the Roberts Road Storm Sewer Replacement Project. This constitutes approximately 400 linear feet of storm sewer pipe replacement varying from 18-inch to 24-inch, replacing corrugated metal pipe with HDPE and associated storm sewer structures.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Everett. So, the motion would read to authorize the advertisement for the Roberts Avenue Storm Sewer Project. I will make the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gallo, will we have some notification in place for the residents of Robert Avenue so they know what's going on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I thought you probably already did it, but, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Line item number six, consider authorizing the advertisement for the Swipswag Solid Waste Contract. Mr. Gallo, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. This is just the one component, the advertisement. The contract or Swipswag is between Lower South and Upper Southampton Township. The board was presented basically a document, set of documents to review. We took input from the board and its comments. This would allow for the continued, under this agreement, this would allow for the continued pickup under the current scenario, how it's picked up currently, or with the automation, the automation with the 96-gallon toter. So, right now, basically, this handles the advertisement component. I'm going to finish reviewing the, the rest of the contract. We just got that handed to us late yesterday. It's about 64 more pages. I want to do some comparison, but this is just to approve for the advertisement, so we can get this bidded out in this year and then have it, the monies be set aside for the, the particular fund, which is this, the, I'm sorry, the nine fund. Nick, what is that fund called again? I'm sorry. Sanitation fund. Sorry about that.
[laughing]
You saved me for us. Thank you, Nick.
There we go. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gallo. So, the motion would read to advertise the advertisement for the Swipswag Solid Waste Contract. Do we have a motion?
I don't have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item number seven, consider authorizing the township manager to sign PennDOT's TE-160 Form for the Brownsville Road Crosswalk. Mr. Everett, sir?
Requesting authorization to allow the township manager to sign a TE-160 form. This is commonly known as a Schind Crosswalk on Brownsville Road. This is required to submit to PennDOT because the project proposes a new pedestrian flashing sign.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Everett. So, the motion would read to authorize the township manager to sign PennDOT's TE-160 Form for the Brownsville Road Crosswalk. I will make the motion for that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item number eight, consider authorizing the township manager to sign the storm order control maintenance agreement, development agreement, and financial agreement for Sebo Cable 235 Andrews Road. Mr. Dillon, sir?
This is a project we approved some time ago. In order to, plans have to be recorded, and these agreements need to be signed. I prepared them. John reviewed them, and they've been signed by the applicants, so authorized, asking for authorization for the township manager to sign the agreements.
All right. Thank you very much. So, the motion would read to authorize the township manager to sign the storm order control maintenance agreement, development agreement, and financial agreement for Sebo Cable 235 Andrews Road. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Roger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to line item number nine, consider authorizing the township manager to sign the participation form for the National Opioid Settlement. Mr. Dillon, sir?
Yes, there's been, you agreed to participate in this some time ago. We retained separate counsel to handle this, and I know there's been an additional one, so I think the motion be to approve any outstanding national opioid settlement agreements.
There's three. There's three.
Yep. All right, then. So, the motion would read then to authorize the township manager to sign the participation form for Purdue Pharma LP and Sackler Family Settlement, to sign the participation form for the National Opioid Settlement Forum with eight opioid manufacturers, and...
And there's one, one other.
This is the...
And there's one other.
There's a newer, there's a newer one, too.
Yeah, this is, I have that right here, too.
Oh, you got that?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Well, let me finish the third one.
All right. Alvegin, Amil, Opotex, Hikma, Indivior, Mylan, Sun, Zidus, and to sign the participation form for Sandus settlement agreement. Mr. Ottinger made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to line item 10, consider authorizing the purchase of the first due software for the fire inspections. Mr. Italia, sir?
Yeah, this will be the upgrade to it from our current provider. There is a total amount spent would be $3,400. That's a $1,200 initial upfront, and then the annual subscription running from now till 2026 in probably September at this point would be $2,200. This would be to bring it up to date. Our current provider is no longer supporting the software we have. We had tried to get to another provider, which did not work out, so we are, we're moving in this direction. This is the hope, so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Italia. So, the motion would read to authorize the purchase of first due software for fire inspections for the amount of $3,400. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to line item number 11, consider approval of the bid proposal for 117 Trevo's Avenue Sanitary Sewer Lateral Connection Replacement. Mr. Everett, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. Consider approval of the RFP that the township received for a sanitary sewer main repair at 117 Trevo's Avenue. We, we sent out four requests for proposals to do this work since the, the estimate was under public, public prevailing wage rate, so we received one bid proposal back from Pasarini and Sons for $22,700.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Everett. So, the motion would read to approve Pasarini and Sons, Inc.'s bid proposal for the amount of $22,700 for 117 Trevo's Avenue Sanitary Sewer Lateral Connection Replacement, and to authorize the township manager to sign the documents. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion from the board?
One question. Mr. Everett, this sewer that goes from the house to the connection, that falls on the property owner?
Correct.
So, this would be from that lateral and the piping out in the road that has collapsed?
Yeah, so the lateral is what actually services the house. The sewer main is where everything drains to.
Okay. Is there, you know if there's any other problem areas on Trevo's Road?
Uh, yes, and our proposals do one a year.
Okay.
They're not, they're not continuous, so it's going to be piecemeal. We're going to fix the ones that are the worst as they come along.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Everett. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Everett. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, line item 12, appointment to the PlayWiki Farm Foundation. We've had some long-time terrific people volunteering their time, but unfortunately, from time to time, people move on. We had advertised a position. We had five residents submit, and at this time, I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Erica De Palma to the PlayWiki Farm Foundation for a term ending January 2030. Do, that's my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mrs. De Palma. We appreciate it. For everybody who put in, we want to thank everybody who put in. It takes residents to do so much in our township. We wouldn't be able to do half of what we do if it wasn't for everybody. For the remaining applicants, we will be having another opening coming up, maybe as early as September. So please, we will keep your name on file. I imagine we will probably open it back up again, Mr. Gallo, I would think, to see if there's any other interested applicants in the township.
I think it is open right now.
It is open up, and terrific. So we will move on from there, but congratulations again, Mrs. De Palma. We appreciate it. All right, moving on to line item 13, consider approval of payment number three for the Dolphin Basketball Court Reconstruction. Mr. Everett, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. Looking for payment, payment number three to Sport Court for the final amount of $12,276.33 for the basketball courts. The work has been completed, and I think the camp is using them now.
All right, very good. So the motion to approve payment number three to Sport Court of PA for the amount of $12,276.33 for the Dolphin Basketball Court Reconstruction Project, and to authorize the township manager to sign the documents. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item number 14, consider approval payment number four for the Dolphin Tennis and Pickleball Court Reconstruction. Mr. Everett, sir?
Thank you again, Board Chair. Requesting payment number four in the amount of $94,411.76 to Silcox &amp; Son for the court reconstruction of the tennis courts at the Dolphin Court, Dolphin Recreation Center.
Gotcha. All right, very good. Thank you very much. So the motion would read to approve payment number four to Mike Silcox &amp; Sons, Paving, Inc. for the amount of $94,411.76 for the Dolphin Tennis Pickleball Court Reconstruction Project, and to authorize the township manager to sign the documents. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Castle, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, line item 15, consider authorizing the solicitor to represent the township in the Cavillo Properties and Management, Inc. zoning hearing board application. From time to time, the township might have a zoning board application come in front of the zoning board where we feel it's necessary to possibly send representation, just to listen in and find out exactly what the applicant is looking for. This has been something that has came in front of the township before, so we, you know, I believe, and that's why it's on the agenda, I had asked for this to be put back, to be put on, so the motion would be to read, beg, to authorize Begley, Carlin, and Mandio to represent the township in the Cavillo Properties Management, Inc. zoning hearing board application. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you very much. Mr. Castle, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, moving on to the manager's report. Mr. Gallo, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. Just an FYI to the residents, there's a street sweeper schedule that's currently on the website. You got for the week of August 11th, which is section five, and then for August 18th, you got section six. But please note, you know, for the residents, as far as their cars on the street, they may want to adjust their, you know, parking on the street so the street sweeper can get by and hit the respective streets. Other than that, you got the blood drive. Denise has August 27th listed at the Sarah Mitchell Center. It's running from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. If you wanted to register, it's 1-800-733-2767. Lastly, you have Community Day coming up real quick. Again, I believe, is this number, or number three?
You know, I think it's been more if we actually go all the way back to, you know, when we first started doing the Back to Blue rides. This might be six or seven.
Six or seven, okay. But we're having the Community Day and First Responder Event, and that's September 21st, and that's Sunday from 12:00 to 4:00 PM at Russell Elliott Memorial Park. You'll have various activities, moon bounce, face painting, mini golf, dunk tank, and you'll have some food vendors. You have a free car show. You have music by Kirko, and we're currently accepting from businesses if they would like to have their banners put up. It goes for, it goes basically to pay or give a stipend back to the first responders, and I believe last year, off the top of my head, Nick, what was the amount?
Like? $3,000 each?
A little over $3,000, or slightly, about $3,000 each, so we raised about $12,000 minus the cost for the first responders. So we're hoping to do that again. That's all I have, Board Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gallo. All right, moving on to supervisors' comments. Mr. Gallo, sir, or Mr. Mr. Ottinger, sir. [laughing] Mr. Ottinger, all right, please, please forgive me. Chief, I have a question for you. What's the policy for the body cam footage, and how long you typically hold that stuff for?
So I explained this to John before. Actually, we changed, we actually changed camera systems before this incident happened. Typically, what happens is if it's a video of evidentiary value, the officer needs to tag it, and then we preserve it. If it's some foolishness, it deletes itself eventually. The second thing, he doesn't understand, he's looking for a supposed phone call. It is unlawful for a police officer to talk on the telephone with his camera on because it's violation of wiretap law. So when he's alleging, we didn't do anything wrong or illegal. As a matter of fact, the officer handled it perfectly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just, when somebody comes up to the microphone and accuses the police of destroying evidence, we need to get this on record so we know what they're doing. Other than that, thank God the other two supervisors were here. We got through this meeting in a half hour. And have a nice night. Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Mr. Castle, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank each of our residents for coming out tonight. There's a good-sized crowd. I do appreciate that. And those who are listening at home, I thank you for being interested in your community and giving us feedback and comments, and we give everyone the opportunity to speak and, you know, let us know what your concerns are. I want to thank our five applicants from the PlayWiki Farm Foundation for applying, and fortunately, we were able to pick one tonight, but there will be other openings, and your services as a volunteer are always welcome. We never want to say no to anyone. Our Parks and Recreation Program is gearing up for the fall program. Please, sign up for an email, lowersouthamptontownship.org. You get one email a week. The township may also use that for emergency notifications, so let's get up to speed. I have a flip phone at home. I just switched this little phone here. I don't know how to use it, but let's get up to speed. Our summer grass season cutting is almost over, and that is a monumental task with the PlayWiki Farm and all the little retention basins, and I just want to compliment Mr. Coppins for doing a great job. We have several department heads over here, and on a weekly basis, sometimes daily, the board members are reaching out to our department heads, and Mr. Coppins always answers his phone call on the first ring, and I appreciate that because it's usually in response to a resident complaining about a pothole or a light out, and so, Mr. Coppins, you're doing a great job. I want to thank you. You won't get a pay raise now, but we'll talk about that in the end. Mr. Chairman, with that, I yield with the exception of our next meeting is September 10th, where we're going to have a special meeting in honor of a terrible tragedy that occurred here in September 11th.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Well, I do want to jump right on to what you said about Mr. Coppins. You know, we do have a bunch of terrific department heads here, and each one deserves to be pat on the back, but, you know, Mr. Coppins generally goes above and beyond. It is not easy dealing with five supervisors. You know, most of you out in the crowd know that there's some big personalities here, and I'm basically speaking about Cindy. So [laughing] Mr. Coppins always does try to go on above and beyond, and, you know, even though no man is perfect, we thank him for all his hard work. Thank you, Mr. Coppins. And to also jump on to Mr. Gallo, he stole my thunder tonight, but this right here is my baby, okay? I was the one who basically first brought the idea to Lower Southampton Township. It has been a glowing success. Last year, I think we estimated over 1,100 people. It's becoming more and more of like a miniature carnival. I can't tell people how incredible this is. We have great talent. When you pull in and you see the fire trucks with their ladders spread across with the American flag going, and you got the patriotic music going, you got the vendors, and then about an hour into it, you have two, three, 400 motorcycles coming into the park. Let me tell you, the wow factor is awesome. We got a free car show. It is a growing terrific event, and it's here to honor our men and women in emergency services. And as Mr. Gallo had said, too, we raise banners, or we sell banners to raise money. We're also doing a cow chip bingo this year. I don't know if anybody's ever done that, but that is an awesome event. Our tax collector, Miss Debbie Doniker, offered her time to sell raffle tickets. So I know Debbie will do a terrific job selling raffle tickets to the crowd, and you really got to try to make it. Once again, we are talking September 21st, Sunday, 12:00 to 4:00. There is no rain date. If you have a car, show up, right? If you have something cool you want to put in, show up. It's a terrific, terrific event. And at that time, I think we will call for a motion for adjournment. Do I have a motion? Sound moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone.